And call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there work in there?
Well, they said that there's no sound, but not that a lot's going on.
Oh, you just turn it on. Test one, two. Check one. Do you have someone? Dave, do you have?
There's no sound.
Hello?
Nothing.
Well, she asked to have a man come through.
Is the power strip on?
The TVs need to be on up there, too. Can't see them anyway, probably.
It's the front left mixer, if I remember right.
Try it on.
Test.
Nicole, go help.
Not used to that. We've had Cisco written on it. I'd be all over it.
You'd be all over it.
Or Creston attached to it.
Are you techie, Casey? Is that kind of stuff on?
No. No, no, no. I wish. Hello? Testing, testing. Yep, it works now.
Whatever, somebody did. What's that?
Somebody hit mute.
Somebody hit mute.
Okay. First item of business is a reading of the minutes from the last meeting. Any additions or changes?
Objection, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Dave makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Nicole. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the presentation of bills. Nicole, do you want to fold off that one bit? If we do pay, then we can go back to the owner and fill them. There's no additions or changes to the bills, do I have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
No second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Let's start with Jason tonight.
I'll leave the sheriff's stuff up to the sheriff, and I have nothing on the other two.
Paul?
Okay, on HEDC, they met. Couple things coming up, is they have that Trail County Community Showcase, which is happening December 15th, it's a Thursday, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. At the Gushard Brewery, that's where the communities in the county kind of get their, what they have for property, what they have for incentives, so on and so forth. It's a pretty, pretty big deal. I don't know if anybody has reached out to Casey for any information on that yet or not, if they need anything from us as far as numbers or anything goes, but that's a pretty, it's a pretty big deal. The Trail County puts on, that's coming up. And then, as far as HEDC goes also, they did make a donation towards, towards electronic sign. If we decide to move forward with that, they would make a donation. And then also, they're still looking at different projects to increase, get some movement going all west. So, I think a lot of those articles were in the banners, so if you have questions on those, check with the banner. And then, just a reminder that HBA is having their Winterland this upcoming weekend, Friday and Saturday. They're always in need of more lighted floats, so if you want to put a float, anybody and everybody is welcome to put a float in there. Not just businesses. So, on the electric side, of course, we will be at some point here getting, going with load controls again this winter when we have an electric bill, we'll do that. Donations, decorations, I'm sure a lot of you noticed the decorations aren't all lit up. From talking to the guys at the shop today, they're having some problems with the sockets. Getting good connections, so they're going to be hopefully working on that, so. And that might be something we'll have to look at, maybe replacing them down the road and updating them, so. But that's why a lot of them aren't working, I was a little concerned if we had a, issued a lot of our new lights, but it sounds like it's more of an electrical issue, they thought, so what they were going to be looking at this week, so. And that's all I have.
Dave?
Nothing on the streets, nothing on the fire department. Casey and myself and Jim will be meeting with Countryside Sanitation on next Monday at 2:00 at the city shops, just get a preliminary on as far as if they want to bid on the contract next November. And that's all I have.
Have we gotten any calls here on what? If we need to change the rates in between?
Pardon?
What we need to do is change the rates in between so that we're not falling behind.
Casey is, has been working on it, and she's got a good plan going, if you want to say anymore about that case here.
I'll give a more detailed report at the next meeting for that.
Thank you.
Nicole?
I have nothing tonight.
On the planning and zoning side, we are going to meet with a engineering firm slash inspection firm out of Grand Forks to see if they would be able to do the planning and zoning options for us for the building inspections. They approached us, and so we'll they want to meet with planning and zoning, and we'll kind of go from there. They have been working on the ordinances, getting those closer. They've made some changes, they just want to make sure that as they're doing it, they're doing it right, so we're not going over again, so they're taking their time on it. The pool grant was signed, so if we're going to move forward with that, we need to start making a decision if we're going to move and look for bids for next year so that we can get that project done and completed with those grant funds that we were awarded. And JR, I'll have an update on the beautification side on the Oster property. The retirement party for John went really well, I think. I think he seemed appreciative of it and thankful to those that chipped in for the gift we got him. We got him a nice watch for his retirement. His family was able to come up, and there was quite a few people that came to the, to the event, so.
Thanks to the girls in the office.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that, all three of you. And to the cafe and Sunday Brew for the food that was brought in. There's one other thing. Paul didn't touch on it, but I know they put this in the packet. And so, the key number on this, this sheet is that we are moving up to approximately 5.7 cents per kilowatt on average for electricity. We are currently selling off peak at 5.5 cents per kilowatt. And this rate goes into effect January 1. So, that rate sheet that I had handed out before, we need to make a final decision on that. Otherwise, we'll be selling electricity at a loss. And so, we probably need to make some changes before even the rate study is completed. And some of the other items that we wanted to withhold off on. Unless you want to make a decision on it tonight, it is something that we will have to make a decision on next convention meeting to go into effect for the next billing cycle. Because it starts on the 10th.
The billing cycle?
Yep.
She runs them around the 20th?
The 20th.
Yep.
So, to make sure we get that in for the next billing cycle, otherwise we'll be off a month. In short. Any thoughts, comments on that? Rick?
Have you got any idea what that means to the average household? I mean, what, I know you're all the own up, what is it, two tenths of a percent or something?
Well, no, that's that's what we'd be buying the power at, is 5.7.
Oh, okay. So, what are you, what are you talking about selling it?
I don't know. It's not a
We just got this, I just got this, so I can't I don't look into it often. I don't know my next meeting, so.
I have no idea what you got at, that's why I'm asking.
Just got it now, so.
I see. Well, what did it cost you before, did you say?
On average, they were projected to be at 5.5 cents this year, which we knew that was coming. I think on average before, we were right around that 5.2, 5.3. It's mostly on the off-peak electricity is where we're going to take the hit. So, any dual electric meters or off-peak heat.
And we're also, we're also looking at places that claim they're dual, and they're not really dual. So, that's another thing that we're, we're working on to get those corrected also. So, because to be true dual heat, you have to have dual heat, so. So, that's one, that's another topic that we're going to be looking into, so.
Do you know, excuse me, Paul, do you know, I know that you're waiting for electricians, but like mine hasn't changed yet. They were there one time, you know.
That's, that's load controls, that.
Yeah, I mean, you know when that's going to take?
Well, we're hoping to get them as soon as we can, so. But, if Jim was here, he could tell you for sure, because he's talking to electricians, so.
Is this time of use chart different than this power supply rate to this 5.7 cents?
So, how it works is there's three different charges, off-peak, mid-peak, and that's our actual rate that we would pay. Then, if you look on the next page, there's the man charge for June, July, August at $19 an hour. And then, January, February, December, there's a $15. And all the month is $9.75. So, that's where that, that's the one that'll kicks it up on average, if you looked at it, at 5.7. And this is an average for all Missouri River customers, not just ours. When I looked, this was a couple years, or a year ago, I mean, it was, that was pretty close to what our rates were going to be, or what we were paying. So, and that's where that off-peak can help bring down our demand charge, which, which helped bring down. You know, if we, if we need 26 kilowatts per, per day, we have to pay a demand charge of 26 kilowatts per day. So, it's more than just this rate, but. And I also know is it this year, Paul, do you remember, that WAPA is going up with their power as well?
I don't know, I hadn't known.
I just know that they're going up so and so. And we get part of our power from WAPA. The last item is we have a individual that'd like to possibly annex in some land into town which we have, we were interested in doing it before. And some of the property that is next to Charlie Stock's residence. And so, as long as you guys are okay with that, I'll work with those individuals to get that process started. That way, because we're going to have to work on a lot of different things for lift station, possibly, streets, all that kind of stuff. For that part of it, so. Thoughts, comments? And those are, it's also in our power and water district.
So, if they annex it, who pays for all of those, you know, power and water and sewer and all that, all that property?
We'd have to work with them and see how we would do it. The one over there, we split the cost. Because it benefited more, and then they were paying it off. We have to work with the resident, or potential resident, what they would want to do. But it would bring in something like four homes. They're potentially looking at duplexes, two duplexes. So, unless somebody has anything against that, I can work with them in planning and zoning. Okay? JR, do you have anything? Tonight?
Wish I could Oster update now?
Sure.
Okay. Because I see it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Because we've taken care of it, maybe.
Yes.
Looking into it, I have now sent a revised letter, which was approved by Charlie Stock on behalf of the county, as well as to Steve at the sheriff's office, just regarding the property of that parcel, which is in the city right-of-way slash city-owned property, basically using the abandonment procedure that's available under our ordinances, as well as state law, saying if you store anything in those areas, you don't remove it, it can be taken and stored and sold at auction. So, just gave her as a final notice the note, that if she doesn't move it, we will form her and store it and sell it if need be. So, at least those items that are without sign, those survey marks, as we have them, because that's all city-owned right-of-way, that will be taken care of. And that letter was sent to the sheriff's office today for personal service, because she doesn't usually respond to certified mail, so. That's the update for that one. I'd also like to say a thank you, I'd relate to that. Just thank you to the city for everything you guys did for John's retirement party, I thought it went very well. I was quite impressed with everything that was put on, and a big thank you to all the city workers as well that helped put that together.
So, regarding that property, I go by there today, and is that her vehicle sitting on the street that are, there's a white Chevy pickup that's, the cab is so full of, I don't even think you could get into the driver's door.
I've got one's hers.
No.
It's not hers?
No.
Nope, not hers?
Coming from other parties that may not be hers. I'm not familiar with the vehicle, I know the trailers have been there for some time.
Vehicles have been there probably a couple months. If you wish, we can ask to have them
This isn't hers?
There's about four vehicles that don't, that aren't hers.
Because there's a white pickup sitting in there that's been there, and then the cab is just
It's not hers.
Probably there.
But we can always ask the sheriff's department to ticket them, that doesn't mean, I mean, they have to move it X amount of feet, and then it could technically be changed, but it's up to you, if you would like us to ask Steve to do that.
I think it should be looked into, it doesn't, it doesn't have a front plate, I didn't notice if there was a rear plate on this. Kind of smashed up in the front bumper.
So, would you guys like them to be marked? I mean, they haven't been there for quite a while, we haven't tagged a lot of vehicles, unless it was snow related or in the way of something.
Well, Bruce, I don't see what good they're doing when the, the cab is full of stuff. It just looks like it's being used for storage, and when it does snow, then Jim and the boys are going to have to fight around, that's, so.
Sorry, are we okay with having?
I think in the past, I mean, we just kind of let the snow, once the snow starts falling, take care of it and start issuing the tickets.
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past.
I'm not trying to do something different, but it's, it's really tough to know if they're moving with people rotating around and working different days, when there's not an obvious sign.
Hold on, we have to store those, you said we have to store them and then sell them, hold on, do you have to? There's a statue which I'll write as follows. I'll have to check the notes again, you can remove the property, it has to be stored for 60 days, then it can be sold at auction. Very similar, Fargo does impounded property there, if you don't, they actually hold a few sales a year. But, that's the requirement. If she wants, she could come back and pay off the storage and removal fees to get it back before that 60 days is up.
And we can charge all storage, so if we
All the costs to do.
Right, so if we rent a container, we use whatever. That would all add up into those, those fees. Okay? Casey? Unless, JR, you had something else?
That's all.
Um, on my list, just some updates for you guys on some of the hot topics you had addressed with me earlier this year. We are getting close to finishing the audit, as of Friday, we submitted all the documents that were requested at that time. So, we're hopeful that it'll be done fairly soon for the three-year audit. The procurement policy, we're looking at that and basing a purchase order policy off of your guys' current procurement policy. Along with that, in your online packets today, or your emailed packets today, I included an internal control sheet, or an internal control memo. It's not anything that I'm looking to get approval on right at this meeting, because it was very short notice. But it's something that the auditors requested for the three-year audit. So, if you guys could review it, you know, between now and next meeting, that would really be appreciated. And let me know of any suggestions or amendments that you think would be great.
Do you want us to email you the questions?
That'd be great, yeah. Yep, thank you. Inventory, I've got a huge list started for a couple of the areas. Community center, I've got just about everything done, and then everything on the insurance schedules. I'm hoping to have that done by the end of the month, so we can start the new year out fresh. We are on the schedule for the electrical rate survey, or electric rate study, excuse me. Side projects and promotions that the office has been doing. John's party, thank you to all involved, Nicole, Cafe, 3R Floral, and everybody for showing up, it was a good time. We decorated the Christmas tree with Brian and Bill, that went really well. We will be working on the Christmas float for the HBA parade, and then working on smore bags after work on Thursday, I believe. We'll see what they say during the HBA meeting. Other than that, we are looking to get the commission's blessing for working towards getting stand-up desks. Workforce Safety has a grant available for local governments to get ergonomic tools for their offices. And that's been a stressed area from both, from both employees in the office, is to work towards getting stand-up desks for, for the office. The grant is up to $10,000 because of the premium that we pay. So, we're hopeful that that would cover three stand-up desks. So, I'm looking for your guys' blessing to move forward with that.
Well, ergonomics is very, 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 very important, especially when sitting at desks all day. So, I, I am definitely for that, we changed it all in college for those who need it, so.
I don't have a problem.
Say that again?
It's not a problem. I'm sitting at the desk all day.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a matching ground, it's automatic.
Automatic.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
It's moved by Nicole, seconded by Dave to approve the purchase of two three stand-up desks using the
Workforce Safety.
Workforce Safety grant. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That is everything for the city office. One further request. The radio, radio station would like to, or requested that the city sponsor the community choir. The cost, if I remember correct, I have written down $350 to sponsor the community choir on December 22nd. So, yep, there was an email sent out, but I didn't see a lot of responses back, so I thought I'd ask you guys tonight what your opinion was on what you would like to do there. And in the advertising line item, it didn't appear that too much was spent out of advertising this year. So, that was one area that I thought would be available if you guys chose to do this.
We've done it in the past, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Jason to approve the city's voucher, the community choir. And if I remember right, when we do those, if it's part of the uses, both utilities, then Missouri River will kick back some of that, too, so. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries.
That's it for me, thank you.
Steve, do you have anything tonight?
Just a quick update for you on personnel in the sheriff's office. Let you know that we have hired two dispatchers, both have got a week and the other one's got about three weeks in now. So, they're in the training process, things are looking better there. We do have one more interview tomorrow for a dispatcher, which hopefully will bring us up to fully staffed on the dispatch side. On the deputy side, I've got one, one deputy hired. He actually graduates from the academy on the 14th, and will start working the Monday after that, so. Still looking for two more deputies, but things, things are slowly improving. And we're here to get back to full staff and get the ground running, so.
Great to hear.
Absolutely, that's where we're at, personnel-wise. That being said, I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Old Dennis, we have the employee handbook, if everybody had a chance to look at that. If there's changes, do we have a motion to approve?
Everybody in the shop has looked at it though, towards later.
This shouldn't be the final that was, with all the changes from the last, or two meetings ago. Jason makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
We need to be getting, well, Casey, who'll get this? Because we don't have to sign with them, right?
Yeah, so you want to make sure that.
Or you keep that information, you have to file for them someplace?
Yep. What we do is we hand the employee handbook to every employee. There's a back page with a signature sheet. They sign it and we put it in everybody's employee folders.
The next item, our new business is the tax exemption clarification. If I remember right, you didn't find it in the minutes. Well, we actually moved it up.
There we go. So I had looked in 2023's minutes. I didn't see anything. Sarah was kind enough to look and find a set of 22 minutes, March of 22. The discussion, there was no motion, but the discussion was titled Building Incentives for Riverwalk Development and Any New Building in Hillsborough. The notes on here says up to 150 max to be exempt. Must be completed to apply. It is time sensitive, tabled for planning and zoning meeting. She didn't see any further minutes.
So it wasn't moved then. So it is, we are at 75. But if you, I think it would be in our best opinion, my best opinion, it would be for us to give up to 150 so that we can get more to build in Hillsborough. And it's an exemption for three years is what we have done. I think we can go to five, but we've done three years. And it's just the first 150,000 of a new build. So if the home costs 300,000 to build, only 150,000 would be tax exempt. The rest would be.
For three years, Greg.
For three years.
I agree. And I think it's a good incentive.
So I was under the impression that we had approved it, but.
And there's no recording on, there's no recording of that meeting for some reason. Because I went back to Travis to that meeting and for some reason they don't have a recording on it.
I don't, yeah, that's why I don't ever remind. I always thought it was just 75 is what I, and I know we had talked about it, but.
Right. And I thought we had passed it, but apparently we just talked about it. So do I have a motion to?
One, clarification. According to the state statute, we can only do two tax levers for exemption on this.
That's two.
Yeah. So my recommendation is we use the two.
And for clarification, they have to, they have to, how much time do they have to do that under?
It's something before it's for Saki, but yes, it's up to the owner to apply. I was almost wondering if the county has the details on this because they've been processing it still. Probably at her 75,000, but there is an application to fill out, correct?
Yeah, but yeah, it's time sensitive. That's why I think the time sensitive came in because I think it's the only, like a year or something after. I'm not sure, but I know that there's a timeline.
There's a timeline. Somebody like to make a motion then to approve the tax exemption for 150,000 for two years?
I'll make the motion.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul's, or moved by Dave, seconded by Paul for 150 tax exemption on new builds for two years. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. The next item is for our retirement account to get. Oh, no, sorry. That's different. I'll have Casey talk about the Starion Bank Cash Management request that they had put in.
Thanks, Levi. What this is about is two representatives from Starion Bank visited me last week, Wednesday. They are looking to get business in local governments and be bankers for municipalities and other local governments, meaning they are seeing if the commission would be interested in changing business from Gustever Bank to Starion Bank for all accounts. I told them that I'd put it on the agenda for you guys to discuss. The interest rates are included with the packet. Upon informal, our informal discussion, they said they could probably get 3.5% interest rate for us on our accounts. I believe our current interest rate with Goose River is 1.5. But there's nothing saying that you can't ask Goose River for a higher interest rate. So that is the, that's the short version of it. If you guys would like me to go further or research further, just let me know. And if you want to stay right where you're at, that's just fine too. I just said I'd put it on the agenda.
I think it wouldn't hurt to ask Goose River if they would be interested in changing interest rates. Would be a starting point for me.
That would be my thought. I don't, I'm not comfortable with moving their banking out of Hillsborough. I think the banks will work with us both.
I agree. Start with us.
Okay. And then just give us an update on the next.
Since you get forward, that's no problem.
Or ten.
Just tell them that Gus said he'd give us five.
Next item is the sign that is out here has not been working for a while, but I did look to see what it would cost to replace it. So this is not a whole new fixture or anything. It's just retrofitting in that same space. And it's about 25,000. For the one that I would suggest that we go with, it'll give a higher resolution. It'll also give you more ability to put things on there. So if Cory at Banner makes nice advertisements, they can just be put on. They don't have to try to make things fit. It'll automatically go into the system. This one has automatically updated, so there's no connection, have to be close to the hardware store or anything. And with that, Paul did ask HEDC, they have donated 10,000 to the cause and Missouri River will donate up to 5,000 for the cause. So we are at 15,000 total. So we are only looking for 10,000 left to get. If you guys are okay with moving forward with that project.
You can use sales tax money to cover part of it too, can't you, Ford? Because it's.
We could, yes. But I would hope, we haven't asked, Paul and I haven't asked very much or moved very far. It's audit, but we would ask with your guys' blessing, if there's other businesses, unnecessary businesses, other community organizations that might be interested in helping out with it. And that way they'd be able to use it.
I have no problem with it. That sign has been there a long time and they've been fixing on it. And it's, I can go for it.
I don't know much about the sign. I don't know what's wrong with it. How long it's been there?
It's been here since 2007.
It's been there quite a while.
They replaced parts for it. I think we looked over it a couple of years ago. Tom and Scott tend to dig around for parts, man, heck, we're kind of finding parts then for it.
Used in temperature, doesn't work.
They got new, they already got one new computer for it to try and get up to date and sell it.
And this would be all cloud-based.
So we're thinking sales tax for about 10?
I mean, if you want to stick the 10 in, that'd be great. And then we can order it and be done. Or if you'd like us to go around and ask, or I heard something about a lodging tax meeting, maybe possibly there's funds for it.
I would say let's check and see if anybody else is interested.
Before we get too far though, I just want to pose this question so that I know and Paul knows that we're not going to stick work into this and not get anything. Is if we reach out and we can't get any for the rest, are you guys willing to pay the 10 out of sales tax to cover it? And it wouldn't be this year, it'd be next year?
I have no problem with that. That's what it's kind of what it's there for.
I don't need any formal, it's just informal so that we have an idea. Anything, any other questions on that?
I can say that it was pretty popular back and it was easy to raise money back then for the previous one. And like I made a comment at HEDC, I'm sure the business would do it if we asked because we just have that kind of business in town. But also, you know, they get asked a lot, you know. So if we could maybe, you know, maybe we could do something this time around because I don't, last time we did, and the last time we did a thousand dollars. That's all. So, you know, it was a lot of, a lot of different churches and organizations stepped up last time and donated money. I just think it would be, you know, if they want to do it again, that's fine. But they get asked a lot. They contribute a lot to this community, whether it's your live event or advertising or they're asked all the time. So, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can not bug them too much. But there's people out there that, you know, there's still, you know, gaming, you know, that we can ask and stuff. So maybe we can get part of it. But I know, but I know our businesses would step up. We need to do so.
Well, should we just put out the word and say, if you want to help with it, you're more than welcome. But if we, you know, if we don't get nothing, then go with the sales tax route?
If that's, if that's the motion that you'd want to do, then we know that it's, it'll move forward and get ordered and put in and all of that.
I'll make the motion that we just put it out that if you want to, if you want to help with this, that's fine. But we can use our tax, sales tax money to cover the balance of the project.
Is there a second?
I have talked to the office to, by the way, that they're okay with the gallons. They would, they would be updating through, so I'm sure there's many people that can do it. You just have to have a password, so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Rick, did you have something?
Well, in just listening to you and the fact that I was in business here for many years, anytime somebody asks me for a donation, I gave it to them. I never can remember turning anybody down. And isn't this something that the businesses benefit from as well? You can put stuff on there. It's a big event. I mean.
In the past, what I was told is if it's an event, that's a community event, it could go on. But if it was anything specific to the business, then it wouldn't. But I was, I think Paul and I both were going to look at like sales tax, not sales tax, gaming, some gaming fund dollars possibly. And there's a few community grants that are out there that we could look at for it. But no guarantee.
But I mean.
We could go and ask the businesses, but like Paul and I are both on the same page. I don't want to, I know businesses want to donate, but if it's something, what if it's going to go to me or if it's going to go to Booster Club or the 4H Club, I'd rather see those donations go there instead of coming to pay for a sign or.
I was meaning, meaning like if you had businesses and they're doing a community event, it's going on there, it's benefiting everybody. And to me, I mean, I know if I was still a business, I'd donate to that park, which is a thing to do.
Well, Rick, if you want, you can donate now and we'll put your name on it. Because we have buddy, she is.
Hey, I'll match whatever you give. I just want to, I just want to return to put you on the spot.
Good question. And I know this is like a lip balloon, but I had a guy ask me, how come the sign ain't always you come into town having it twice as big, putting events on there as well as if a business wants to rent time off of it. John Deere sale Friday, 20% off or whatever. Or you just want to keep it down here in the park so it looks nice in the main part of town. To me, it don't matter. But this guy is in business in town and he was actually saying, hey, we need advertising, but don't do any good on by a rural tracksman. They come in and go to John Deere or go to Senex or wind up in REK.
So the problem is Newman signs and the DOT is our hindrance. The signs that are there have to be community or it has to be, the business has to be right there. There's a lot of regulations that I don't even know. I just know Paul has looked at it. I've looked into it and it's, it's a headache to try to get it.
Because when I traveled on the road, I called 173 towns. And I think I can come up with maybe 10 of them that have, and maybe they were independent, but they had the sign as you first come into town, you could read off blah, blah, blah. This was happening, that's happening. It ain't all just softball tournament at eight o'clock. Just a suggestion, but if Newman has got it tied up, they got it tied up. There's no doubt about it.
I think they have the, because somebody asked the other day if we would, I came to planning and zoning about signing off on a sign that we needed to sign off on. So there's a lot of regulations and so.
Not that, not that we'd be against doing like that, but we, but if we're talking $25,000 for this sign, can you imagine what that's going to cost you? I realize money comes in there, but we just flop 10 grand here five minutes ago for something else.
Well, I'm not going to say we can't, but I'm just wanting to be aware. Are we talking, would we potentially be talking, I have never looked. Would it be $50,000? Would it be 100? I don't know. So.
I have no idea.
Not that, not that I.
I'll tell you, so actually go out and talk to people and see how much interest there is. Like, and ask it for donations. Maybe you should see if there's some interest.
Well, I think if we could, we would. Because I think many businesses have asked about it. Even I reached out and they're not willing to give up any land for signs out there. That's the tough part.
But it's only, like I say, it's like a lip balloon. No, I think it's a good idea.
I think it's great.
But it's like everything, Chuck, who's going to do it?
And we've talked, I mean, we've looked into it to try to figure it out. If we could rotate it, if we could do a non-digital sign. And it was, it's not an easy thing. Where we were going to put it, it is not an easy thing to do. And if it's any other advertising, I think the restriction is, is your business has to be there in order for you to advertise. So John Deere could advertise, Casey's could advertise, Senex could advertise, but we couldn't advertise Miller's right there. Then that.
If there's somebody out there that knows those particular cars.
No, not even that.
Then we would know.
So that's kind of the issue. I think HEDC even had their sign taken down because it wasn't where it was supposed to be. So any other discussion on the motion that would allow us to use 10,000, 10,000 of sales tax to pay for the sign if we don't get it covered with other funds? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
I'm sorry. I was going to say, I think we should put a little more time into it and explore and maybe. and explore and maybe if businesses are interested, maybe we do get a bigger sign and the city still pitches in that ten thousand.
I can look, it's just, it might cost more for the, I can look and see. Uh, Jason?
No.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Last item on the new business is our Christmas thank yous for our employees, normally we have given twenty-five dollars in Hillsborough bucks, I've had requests from some staff for some apparel this year, if you're okay with that, I can get that ordered and done, otherwise we can go back with the Hillsborough bucks, we'd be looking at about eighty per employee, if I remember right, and that would be a nice jacket for them.
Do they have any type of shirts for office type wear?
Uh, we could look at pillows or shirts too, that's another option.
I guess whatever, I'd say whatever they're interested in.
The one that I had mentioned, they like the jackets, so.
Okay.
It's something similar to this type of jacket, a lightweight that they could wear when it's chilling in the office. Big old save on electrical, then.
Are they, are the jackets and stuff being purchased in town here in embroidery town or, or do we do it town to town?
It'd be out of town, there isn't one, there is an embroidery shop in town. We do have a customization in town, but it's not embroidery type, it's single cut type letters. This would have the logo, a city logo on it.
We looking for a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I can second it.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Paul, to get jackets for the employees, and there is funds left over in the president's line item that we looked at that'll cover it, so. Is there any other discussion on it? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. And the last item is the Hillsborough dollars for scholars raffle, just need a motion to approve that, looks like it is.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? It's not online.
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Jason, any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Any commissioners have any other items for the agenda?
I just want to say JR, good job on the, on the whole school letter and putting it all together, thank you. All part of the job.
Remember you got forty-six years left.
Yeah, that's right. Clock's gone here.
Hey, that's a new clock.
Yeah, there we go. I'll see you at every meeting.
You'll make it, Jerry.
Now we're not on for forty-seven years, we better make sure it lasts, we better get the time next. Anybody else have anything for the order?
I just want to say again, thanks a lot, you know, for what you, what you guys are doing in the office, with John's deal and the tree and everything, it's, it's nice to see that our city is getting in this Christmas spirit and showing our community off, I appreciate that you take the time to do that, especially in your free time.
And I'd like to say how nice and clean your office looks, and you guys have organized things over there, when I went in there, it's just, I mean, it's a whole different office that I've seen in a long time, so, thank you.
You do need an extension cord back there.
Give me an extension cord back there?
Well, your cleaning lady was looking for the extension cord.
We took it for the Christmas tree, sorry.
That's what we said, that's what we told her, it's probably so.
Is anybody else? Chuck?
Uh.
Would you want to come up to the mic?
Excuse me, I've got a call, do this thing on, or is it just for looks?
No, no, you got to just push the button.
Okay, I appreciate Jason, you bringing up a point that don't get exercised nearly enough here at this meeting, rather than bringing up something and voting on it right away, have some discussion on it, get some input from it, I appreciate that, thank you. No vote to me was, was a fact that, hey, somebody's doing the due diligence and I appreciate it, not that the rest of you aren't, but having said that, I also understand after a bad comment I made a couple of months ago about the garbage and who was getting the brakes on it, who wasn't, if I understood right at that meeting, commercial accounts were getting charged the same as residential accounts, is that correct?
From what we see right now, Chuck, is they are getting charged the same amount per yard, so a residential bin is eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents, a yard in a dumpster is being charged at eighteen seventy-five as well, so if you have a six-yard dumpster, it's eighteen seventy-five times six.
Okay, and I know you're working on it, I'm not on the commission, I want to give you a couple of suggestions, I did talk to a couple of towns within a hundred miles of here, the one, you can believe it, they get picked up garbage twice a week, commercial, residential's only once a week, but the commercial one is two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, so if we're losing money on garbage guys, let's reconsider how many yards per say, and I'll pick on him, Paul puts in there, I know we got an art field, because I put a lot of stuff in there, no, in all seriousness, so, everybody, when I was talking to the boys this morning, said, boy, that'll, that'll shock everybody, and I said, hey, if other town's got to do it to make it pay, we're going to lose our reticle rates, everybody's got to pay that, do some checking, we're probably a little underpriced, and I know some businesses aren't going to like this, but we have, how many commercial accounts? Twenty? More, okay, well, I'm gracious, twenty, take twenty times another hundred dollars, that's, that's two grand a month right there that's out the door, that's only a hundred dollars, so give it some real thought and don't be afraid to stick your neck out, because they can only chew so long and then they give up. I just wanted to throw that in for information, I'll also give you the name of the town and the chief financial officer if you really want to know, but that's immaterial. One thing, JR, every town is probably different, and I don't know how the law can be different, but we're talking about abandoned vehicles or what we think is our abandoned vehicles, you know, on the street, ones that got garbage in them and they're not moving.
You're talking personal property, not vehicles, vehicles handle differently.
Okay, and vehicles are differently, okay, so, I had an experience two years ago, I had a Explorer station wagon that I, I sold it on a Thursday afternoon, left the license plates on it, mainly because I, the wife wasn't feeling good and I got the guy's cash and signed off on the, on the contract or the title, the following Tuesday, I got a call from Ed's Towing in Moorhead, if you want to get your Explorer back, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars for towing, storage, and whatever, and I said, what do you mean, my Explorer? Well, we were called to Portland, North Dakota to pick it up beside the bar, it was left there for two nights, and they don't leave anything sitting in front of their business place for two nights, anyway, you know, maybe we should start looking at our, our things around here, I realized out of the business place, unfortunately, the, you know, the poor guy that called, I think the sheriff's office, and said, whose car, his license plate number, come right to me, but after I called back to Ed and told him what was going on, I never heard any more about it other than a guy in the guild went down and bought it for a hundred dollars six months later, but something to think about, there must be ways that people are, I mean, cities are acting responsibly to clean up the act, it's tough, but it does happen.
I'd have to check what our ordinance says, but we do have the power to tow as well.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I just, if we want to go that far, that's up to the city and the sheriff's office to start doing that.
Well, this, this is actually.
I know we haven't, we haven't been ticked it so far as the courtesy to give them the notice, but.
Sure, and that's great.
If you want to do it for four, half of forty-eight hours, well, we surely can do so.
No, I'm just giving you a.
We'll give you your phone number.
Hey, that's okay, not everybody called and they told you Merry Christmas, but what I am getting at, it happened to me and they thought they were getting Chuck Parton's car and he was going to lose it.
Yeah.
And it did, went away, but having said all that, I guess, I again, and I know something other than John Jewison, the city did put on a great party for him, I enjoyed being here and seeing him and his family, as well as some former commissioners, Mr. Rutwell, was really crippled up, came up from Fargo, so thank you to whoever was involved with it, it showed a real gracious thing for John, and how many years was he here?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, thank you, one other, no, never mind, thank you.
Rick, do you have anything? You're the only other one in the audience.
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to know how much, excuse me, I just wanted to know how much we plan on contributing by.
So you can start saying?
I can, my financial advisor, there goes your Christmas.
Yeah, there goes your jacket.
First of all.
Well, maybe we get all the businesses to contribute something, forgive it to Levi.
A little, huh? I want to thank all of you, it was a, is this mine, it's still yours?
Mine's off.
Mine is off.
My gosh, mine off.
You're just electric.
You have an electric personality there, right?
But I do want to thank all of you for the nice party you gave John, he's been my, my attorney for forty years and I have a lot of admiration for him and he's done a wonderful job for the city. Secondly, I was in Fargo and I was talking to somebody, she said she was in Harlem, and she said, I want to tell you, you're so lucky to have this young lady that came there, and she said she does a wonderful job, so that's good to know, and welcome to Hillsborough.
Thank you.
On another note, the west side of the city, and I brought it up, Paul knows it as well, and at our EDC board, we had Paul, we're there, we're talking about promoting what we could do to get that going over there, but first of all, I've asked before, we don't have, the irrigation system didn't work, I asked Paul why the trees weren't there by anchor, he said we planted them, they died, well, that was two years ago, now, again, they could have been put up, so when we're looking at different ways, whether it's EDC or city or whatever, first thing, you got to make it look a heck of a lot better than it did this summer, and there's other things I could say about it, but I don't want to have any problems with anybody here, but I think we need to get on them, let's get it cleaned up this summer, they're going to, we're going to help promote it and sell lots and stuff, it's got to look a lot better, because I don't think anybody would build over there the way it looks, but with that, I want to thank all of you for the job you do, I know it's a thankless, hard job, but I appreciate all of you, so, thanks, Merry Christmas, happy to.
Thanks, Rick, same you.
Levi, if I could ever get all those lots out there, whose responsibility is it to keep them whole, trailing?
We, the city has a responsibility on certain lots, which would be the park lots, which would be like next to the boulevards, all the rest of it is up to the developers, in which the summer, the guys, we're going to take care of it, and I seen them and I said, no, we have the developers, that's a developer's cost, so, we, on the, where the big lots are at, or the ones that.
Absolutely.
But we have a few sections in there that are, that were turned over to the city, but they're all the park style type lots.
One other question, and maybe Mr. Garrett can answer it, is the landowner, the developer, Lowry and all them, were they putting any incentive out there to sell lots? I realize they got them listed on your phone, you can work them up.
That's, that's, that's what HEDC and we are working with them right now, to try and come up with a plan, you know, and I know that there is an article written about maybe possibly building a spec home out there, they have offered incentives to help, they would give us a lot, for example, and to help us sold and things like that, so, but a lot of that stuff is still in the talking stage right now, and I don't think anything, unless Rick knows of something beyond HEDC, I don't know of anything that's firm right now, obviously this hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we did on the tax exempt tonight is one of those types of incentives, what are some other incentives that we could do to help with them properties, and obviously we're asking, you know, the developer to throw things in too, so.
Absolutely, his property, he's the one that benefited from this.
Yeah, so, but we're.
The city is as well, but there's no reason that if you got a lot out there for eighty-three thousand dollars, I know it's got to be gorgeous, it's going to be beautiful, and not knocking that a bit, you know, maybe it's such a thing that if we were going to throw ten grand into something, maybe they should throw ten percent off of whatever lot they got out there, food for thought.
Yeah, definitely, and that conversation, we've been having that, right, Rick?
Okay.
It's been had, but I don't think anything, you know, come out concrete yet, because, but if they're hoping to hit the ground running this spring is what we want to do, so, with whatever incentives we might have, so.
They're also looking at, at our last meeting, at a couple grants too, for single and multiple buildings, and that's, if we land something like that, that'll be a big boost.
So we're looking, so we're looking at those things and, and we're kind of looking at, you know, a little bit from everybody as better than a bunch from one type of thing, you know, so if everybody can kind of give a little bit, if it's enough to sway somebody to build a house out there, well, once you get it going, you know, maybe it might, you know, keep going, but, but yeah, it's all, and we're looking, you know, if somebody's got a suggestion, you know, hey, there's a lot of communities out there that, there's communities out there that actually give so many months for utilities, you know, so there's, there's things you can do, you know, it just matters how far they want to go, just like what JR said on the parking, you know, how far do we want to go, do you want to go or not, so it really comes down to how much do we like to do, so.
And, and you know, Paul is, and I brought it up to Paul or to John when he was at our meeting, you've got to make it look like something, when your sprinkler system isn't working, you've got no, they didn't put any trees where they said they were, they died, there's things that just you could do to enhance the value or entice people to come there, but not when it looks like an abandoned lot that just, you know.
And a lot, and a lot of, a lot of that was, that was still under warranty, that was still under their, their pocket, and you can, you can ask, how much do you ask, and nothing gets done, well, hopefully Mr. Lowry now will see, you know, it's amazing that, you know, that somebody in his organization didn't drive down here and see that and say something to them, why, why are we telling them from here, you know, so, you know, but if, you know, we can't, if they don't, if it was their responsibility to have the sprinklers working and they never got them working, well, obviously, how much do we want to spend as a city to get them working, you know, some of them are going to have to do that.
And the mowers property, pullers weeds and different things like that, and I told him himself, so it's no secret how I feel about it, but I think maybe if we don't get grants or something, if we're looking at money from different organizations, maybe what we need to do is hold tight and say, hey, what are you going to do? And then we're willing to step up, rather than us step up first, if I was a developer, I'd make that more, make it eye appealing than work to get them sold, you know, because I think it could be a real nice development out there.
Right, yeah.
You know, and when I built my. You know, when I built my home in Riverbend, Jay Bediger was the developer. He stepped up to the plate. He gave me a deal, he said, I said, I'll build, be the first house to build out there. He gave me a deal and I said, I'll build a nice home, and I think I did. And that's all full, it filled up just like that, you know, it was no time. But he did something to make it, so it had some eye appeal to him.
I got a feeling when the specials start coming, people will probably get a little bit more, when they have to start writing that special check, and they got all them lots, they might be a little bit more eager to, to do something, so, but. But it's, it's a conversation piece that we have to have, and where it goes, like I always tell everybody, if we don't talk about it, nothing's going to happen.
You got the interest rates, they're hurting right now, but they're hurting everybody.
When is the walkover bridge going to be done or started? What year?
It'll start this summer, but it won't be finished for another two summers. It'll be started this summer, but it won't be finished until next summer.
Can I ask your, the auditor, one question?
Sure.
Were you talking about this audit that I know Chuck and I were pushing to get it done a long time ago? Is that the one that's, we're going back, looking at, not the former auditor, the one before? Is that the one where you're talking about tonight?
The one I was talking about tonight, it's a three-year audit. It's for years 20, 21, and 22. The other one, 2018 and 2019, was completed, I believe in 2021, and that was done by the state of North Dakota. This three-year audit that we're working to finish is being done by I Bailey.
That one's not completed, right?
Not quite yet. We're hopeful that it'll be done here fairly soon. They've gotten every request that they've asked for, every piece of paperwork that they've needed, so far they've got, so we're hopeful it gets done pretty soon.
So then we should be going forward and looking at a lot better outlook than what we had?
Rick, this is the one that you were, this is the audit that you had been talking about earlier, you were hearing, so it is pretty close. This would bring us up to.
End of '22.
The end of '22, so it makes it current, done all of our audits.
Well, that's good. Levi, when is the bridge stated for down in the park?
'26.
You know, they're already down there painting stuff and marking stuff off, so they're getting a good start on it. Is ever in charge of it?
That's Dave.
I suppose the state engineers are doing preliminary surveying on it.
KJL, they've been down there for a good 10 days. Does anybody, was there ever a preliminary map made of that, what the new one is going to be, far as length going? Because if you're going to raise it, you're going to have to get more length, I would think.
I don't think it's going to be raised at all. It's going to be straight now, but I don't think it's going to be raised.
It won't, huh?
No, not that I know of. When they talked to me in gym, there was nothing about raising it, but it will be a straight bridge instead of.
Right now, it's got an angle.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But it'll be a straight on bridge.
Well, that's good, I'd love to see the progress.
Do I have anything else for the go to the order? If not, do I motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Jason, all in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned.